And I moved, well, purchased property four years ago and it turns out just within a mile of the geothermal plant. And I moved here to basically semi-retire. I'm a tax accountant, been working for thirty-five years, and I really love the area on Boeiki Road. So, and, and speaking of being there within one mile of the plant, we didn't hear any major noise or anything until March of this year. It was just a whisper that we would hear from the plant, and so we were not concerned at all. We never heard of any development plans for the plant. And, and we got a permit. We're building a home. We are building a permitted home, and it's just astonishing to me that we were never provided any type of a disclosure of any of the potential developments that were coming around the corner. And so now, the noise has been an extreme aggravation for myself, my husband, and, and I know that the neighbors that are just above us, the gentleman that's living just above us, he can hear the conversations at the plant when the wind is, is blowing in our direction. And so, it's just astonishing to me that development has been allowed to continue around the plant, permitted and otherwise. I mean, it just seems that there should have been some consideration to warn people of the development coming around the corner. And I, I cannot feel that I can trust in the presentations that were provided today. I think they were excellent presentations, speaking on behalf of PGV's presentation. However, you know, you hear all the time, and we're hearing it today in other people's testimony, that there are always accidents, there are always things that happen that, that we don't even care about, undercover type events. So, air quality, water quality, I'm concerned about water quality, quality of our water going into the oceans due to potential leaks. And I'm also concerned, I read the article in the paper last night regarding seismic issues. I think it's really important to pay attention. I mean, yes, I did move to lava zone one, but it seems, I took, I did that of my own volition, but why are we tampering with Mother Nature? It's just, it just seems very extreme. So, and I know that there's been a lot of money that's been spent, and that the constant steady nature of the energy is very important and very appealing. However, I really feel that use all the land that's intended for this geothermal activity, do a solar farm, you know, something that's never gonna hurt anybody, something that's never gonna cause people to have any kind of ill health in any way, whether it's by the air they breathe, or the fish that we eat, or whatever it is, or the water that we're drinking. I think that every, the council, everyone needs to go back to the drawing board and take some visionary steps to, to, and create a think tank, to do some new research, and, and consider all this. The other thing that I've, that I've thought about is insurance. You know, we, we can only acquire homeowner's insurance probably through Lloyds of London. It seems like everyone in our neighborhood is insured through Lloyds of London. So what is gonna happen to our insurance rates, you know, if there are issues involving geothermal plants? I'm concerned that maybe we'll still be able to get insurance, but who knows what the cost might be. So, and, and then, you know, in reading that article in the paper, I mean, sixty to ninety percent probability exists that there will be seismic activity, volcanic activity in the rift zone in fifty-year increments. I mean, you know, is it worth, worth it to invest all of this money to provide power to the island of Hawaii, and then, of course, there's a consideration of Oahu, and then to potentially not even have that power available if there is a substantial event that Mother Nature causes on this reserve? It just, yeah, I question the, the risk of the investment of the money and the risk of the health of the people, and noise, back to noise, I wanna address noise one more time, and that is, is that I don't really, you know, we have decibel levels that have been established, those decibel levels are not satisfactory, are not adequate to the health of the people. I mean, we're, we're missing sleep, and people are aggravated, which is causing a lot of aggravation, which I hear from a lot of them. So I think that's everything I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Pree. Thanks for listening. Our next testifier is James Hitchcock, testifying in patient seven six four. Morning.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I don't have too much original to say. Last week, we covered just about everything I was gonna say. I was gonna read excerpts from the article in the paper yesterday, from the volcano watch column. I guess I can sort of read some of it. Some of you may not have read the whole article, or...
Just for information, we do have the article in front of us, but you're free to read it if you want.
Oh, okay. Well, I think somebody in the audience hasn't, hasn't read it. I just wanna read a excerpt from the lava flow hazard zone maps designate the summits and rift zones of Kilauea and Mauna Loa volcanoes as the most hazardous. For Kilauea, the summit rift zones of the volcano also have the highest geothermal potential. So the lava flow hazard map closely resembles a geothermal resource map. The geothermal venture commercial power facility has produced thirty megawatts, which is twenty percent of the annual electrical demand of the island. The most recent study in two thousand and five suggests that the potential of Kilauea resource excluding, could be between two hundred and fifteen and six hundred megawatts. And if they develop that much of a resource, the power generated from it would far exceed the need for electricity on the island of Hawaii. Therefore, the state of Hawaii is proposing the use of an undersea cable to link the island between Hawaii, the potential major energy producer, and Oahu, the major energy consumer. Report about the risk posed by volcanic eruptions. HBS scientists estimated a high probability of eruptions from Kilauea's lower east rift zone within any fifty-year period. Publication also found a significant likelihood of lava inundation along the cable pathways linking the proposed Kilauea geothermal developments of the Honolulu Energy Grid, or to the Honolulu Energy Grid, because the cable would have to pass across the northeast flank of Mauna Loa, Hawaii's other very active volcano. These threats are real. In the last two hundred years, eruptions have occurred three times in the lower east rift zone of Kilauea, and six times on the northeast flank of Mauna Loa. The possibility of an eruption in the geothermal resource or statewide cable path within any fifty-year period is between sixty and ninety percent. The effect of an eruption within a geothermal power development can be severe, and the site can be deeply buried by lava. The power generated by the geothermal facility would be lost, possibly for weeks, months, or even years. Power generation and transmission could not resume until after this eruption ceased, and it was safe to re-enter the area and re-establish the facilities and the cables carrying electricity away from the site. As a community, we should explore all options in our quest for inexpensive, reliable electricity. There are downsides to the utilization of any energy source, and we must balance the negatives with the positives when making choices. This includes balancing the considerable benefits of geothermal resource development with the inherent volcanic risk of such a development on active volcanoes. This is an article written by a very impartial source, the scientist at Hawaii Volcano Initiative. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Our next two testifiers here, we asked them to come to, they were Scott Millicom and John Bryan. And Barbara, how many more testifiers do you have in the pool?
We have two more, Cherry Yoshimoto.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you. Our next testifier is Patricia Jones Watkatsuma Stewart. She will be commenting on communication seven four three, seven four three point one, and seven six four.
Thank you. I included all my names so that I could get the attention of Governor Abercrombie, who knows me and my brothers and sisters from University of Hawaii in nineteen seventy, and also Watkatsuma, where I ran for Board of Education in nineteen eighty-four. Seventy-six thousand eight hundred eighty-three votes against an opponent who outspent me six to one. I nearly won that one, but as effective as I have been politically before coming to this island, I've tried this geothermal testimony, sharing my manao and having my hopes shattered over and over and over against an industry that perhaps is too big to fail, or is backed by people like Big Chaney. Please tell me, is Big Chaney still an investor, a major shareholder in today's PGV? You know, is this why our geothermal citizen input is discounted, slandered, and libel by joint state, US, Israeli corporate suppression? Cold-hearted discounting, lack of any concern for our small indigenous population, our innocent environment, the people who live here? One mile from ground zero, Leilani Capolo is insufficient. The seven new wells create far too much pollution for me, four point two miles away, to survive for my friend Margaret Dohanos, who lived two miles away, who passed away last night, everybody, from liver cancer. She's already like fifty-seven. Cracks occur in the casings every week, if not daily, according to a worker who spoke to me, not knowing that I would tell. Lead and arsenic are in the subterranean fumes themselves, which escape from the frequent burial legal cracks. The geothermal side effects and benefits are not the vehicle we need for business or agricultural self-sufficiency. This energy being controlled and harnessed and regulated and finally becoming honest is not the way to go. The leafs from the triple capings that keep cracking have been sufficiently toxic to negatively impact and destroy probably a hundred people's lives. Anthuriums, bananas, and papayas dead. Please, Governor Abercrombie, end the terror by solar. Take the hostile Obama tariffs recently imposed on affordable Chinese photovoltaic solar panels. We need to power the new all-electric Toyota RAV4 SUV. Three hours charging time from a twelve-volt source, you can drive four hundred miles, zero emissions. I am formerly a prattling new aircraft turbine aerodynamic marketing scientist. Cracks occur frequently. We live here in the most powerful volcanic area on Earth. What may be viable in Nevada, what may be viable in Zealand is not, is not feasible here. Okay, the purple stuff? Thank you for addressing the purple stuff. Okay. Those various purple substances are not what I saw. What my son-in-law, I, and various others saw, was a very, very, very concentrated radioactive glowing purplish tint on the clouds above the geothermal plant. That's where they gather. An open third eye is not required to see this. It's a gas. It's a radioactive gas that glows, and if there's something, the gas is here, something's here, it casts a kind of a weird chartreusey-green shadow, okay? Prove me wrong with gas spectroscopic continuous analysis, monitoring. Please thoroughly read the existing reports which have been created and been ignored or suppressed by local and global developers. My next turn neighbor, nineteen ninety-one, ninety-two, Lisa Wesley's wife. Well, I was getting migraines, I started to get migraines, when Lisa, who had migraines for twenty-five years, boom, she drops dead. Her loving husband, a Canadian, who did not know any better, buried her right there in the yard and caused quite a stir. The testimony time limit on our testimony here, three minutes of taped testimony? Fifteen minutes of heartfelt testimony that we hope will not be composted or incinerated unread does not give enough time to address the problem or to describe the solution. The passage of Bill two fifty-six provisions after the necessary imminent departure of ORMAT, they should continue to contribute, or not, whatever, just make them go after their departure to somewhere else. Their vertical structure of their company, please, let them take their drill someplace else. We'll take a collection up to enable your shipping and handling costs, Mr. Conchini. Immediate closure of PGV. And the Hawaii Legislature's fraudulent arbitrary redefinition of fumes that God's intelligence designed to main... Wait, let me start again. And the Hawaii Legislature's arbitrary fraudulent redefinition of fumes that God's intelligence designed to remain subterranean for the protection of his delicate loved ones above the earth's very most fragile area crust of fumes as minerals. These fumes have been redefined as minerals. Gas is not a mineral, hello. This is not mining. This is completely illegal. Please fund exit costs for the PGV's eight million dollar drill. Take it to a more appropriate place, please, away from population, on a less active volcano. Paley is too big to tamper with. I believe we have a major clue as to why serious health problems we usually experience only during the wind season in Wawa, when PGV fumes as described by Goddard. And Goddard's report mandated by the EPA in nineteen ninety-one, as going in established wind stream to my road, are appearing now. Migraines, cancerous, uh, my neighbor keeps having heart attacks. It's 'cause of the seven new wells and all the cracks that just allow things to keep leaking out. Good studies have been done. Please look at the existing studies by Goddard and Goddard in nineteen ninety-one, and by the University of Texas's Dr. Legater, health syndromes from the Texas geothermal industry's citizen health damages. What they're experiencing in Texas is exactly what we have here, except ours are more...
Please summarize.
Thank you very much. Margaret Dohanos, the most recent, human casualty, a community volunteer, a beautiful person died last night. Please stop the killing.
Okay, thank you.
Our next and final testifier this morning is Brady Bennett. She is commenting on communication seven four three, seven four three point one, seven, and seven six four. She's a realtor, a new home buyer, and representing herself and her family.
Aloha, good morning, good afternoon. I'm really new to this issue, didn't plan on even speaking about it today, but I had a few, few things I wanted to say. I went to my first geothermal meeting less than two weeks ago, and had no idea of what kind of health effects people were having. I just wanted to learn more about the issue as a realtor and as a new home buyer within a half a mile of the plant. And for the last year and a half now, I bought in February two thousand and eleven, right behind the plant in Launipuna Gardens, I've had some really strange health problems and didn't know if maybe it was related. So I went to the meeting, and without even knowing what the health problems were, most people were having, I started hearing things about women, women having ovary problems. And the craziest thing was the day before, I had just gone to my gynecologist to have my ovaries looked at since I was having pain. Had no idea that it, that this was affecting other women in the same way. My tests have come back normal, my blood tests have come back normal, but I still have the pain, and I don't understand it. I also have two daughters, and I was pregnant the whole first year that I lived in that home, and had a super difficult pregnancy that ended in a C-section. My daughter was healthy, but had some problems after the birth, and I can't say that that was the geothermal plant, but it's just things that didn't happen to me before, since I've been living there. And it makes me wonder, and I still have a lot of research to do on it. As a realtor, I'm questioning whether I should disclose more to my clients who buy in that area. Right now, we are, we have a lot of pressure on us as realtors to be sure that we disclose koki frogs more than, than this issue, and I don't think that koki frogs are gonna kill people. On top of hurting people physically, we have the noise. I don't, I don't know the woman's name who just testified before me, but the noise level, she's correct, it, when I first moved in, it was very minimal. And now, when my daughter, my two-year-old daughter is out in the yard, my older daughter, she gets scared when certain sounds happen, and she now knows how to say geothermal plant, because I've had to show her where the lights are, and what, what they're doing, and the sounds that come from that, she still gets scared and runs to the house. There's just a lot that I still have questions about, and I just thought that it was important for you to know today that even someone who's as new to this issue as I am, and to the neighborhood as I am, I'm having very similar problems to the people that have been there for years, and I'm still trying to explain it. And I also wanna say, as a realtor and a professional, that by law, or, or maybe by our brokers, we need to be disclosing more about the geothermal plant than we are, because there's gonna be some major lawsuits coming up, just like there were for koki frogs. It's gonna happen to the geothermal plant as well. Also, I just wanted to say that my husband and I both have been extremely tired. We're getting enough sleep, but we're, we're waking up feeling like we're, we still need more sleep, and he's having a lot of skin problems as well. I, again, I don't know how this could be related, but I just wanna say, this has all happened since we moved into that neighborhood. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. For the public information, we will be taking lunch break at twelve noon, and we will be reconvening at one thirty. I guess Mr. Millicom is not here. I'll see him. No, Mr. Bryan?
I am, Mr. Bryan.
I remember you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Bryan. You're testifying on all three items.
I am, and I'm here representing my family. I wanna start off by saying that last time I testified, I made it clear that anyone that disagreed with me, or took a different side on the issue, including council members, I still respect your opinion. I did ask you for one moment to contemplate if it was your own children and your own family that lived where I do, so close to that plant. I wanted you to feel like, what would it be in my shoes? And I felt I was being respectful. But after reading my councilperson's statements in the paper, which to me were slanderous, spineless, and basically insinuating that people that live in my neighborhood who have any claims about health issues are doing so for fraudulent reasons, to get relocation money. Let me assure you, a hundred and thirty percent of tax assessed value will be a huge loss for me. And if you stand behind them say, statements, I invite you to use my name today, Mr. Bryan. I, I, I'm directing this comment to you. I want my councilperson to use my name and accuse me of making false claims, because I don't know about any health claims, I didn't know about the relocation program, I didn't know about funds being set aside for safety and mitigation. And twenty years of not doing the right thing, twenty years of not doing anything towards safety is used as an excuse to not do anything now, and the money that was grabbed and misappropriated is now spun and acted as if those who want the money to be used for what it was intended to, as being us trying to take money away from them. I don't appreciate it, I don't appreciate the disrespect, and I only learned about these health claims as this issue came up. But since I've lived in that spot, so close to that plant, I've had what's called a series of mini-strokes, five small places in my brain that showed dead tissue on the imaging. I have tumors in my neck I also had imaging of, one is the size of a legal OPD. So please, either apologize, or stand behind your statement and mention my name, because I would love to go to court and teach you a lesson about making such statements. I am angry, and anyone who can hear my voice that lives in Puna, I hope that you will not vote for Mr. Block's. That kind of disrespect, and that kind of not listening to constituents, as far as I know, he's never been to my neighborhood.
All right. I just wanna make sure you focus on the presentations, because that's what's on the agenda.
Oh, I will. Trust me, I will. That was my prefacing.
Okay.
You never came forward to call him for us.
Yes.
I wanna say something about the respect for us, as citizens.
Let me finish.
I will get to those points now.
Let me finish. So your first three minutes are up. I, I believe you were testifying actually towards the PGV presentation, based upon what you just said. So now, please transition to...
No, I, I have the PGV remarks to make now, and I do intend on making them.
Okay, your second three minutes will start then. Go ahead, PGV.
First of all, I think the argument they put forward depends on everyone's ignorance of the subject. To use the word brine and not be clear of the differences between gases and brine to make it sound like a completely closed system, where they're obviously measuring releases of hydrogen sulfide, that we have to trust the numbers they give us. And when I asked their PR person, blue ribbon specialist, at one of the meetings last time, seems to me you don't have a dog in this fight. Why would you care how the money's spent? You have to pay that amount no matter what. And it was indicated or conveyed to me that there really wasn't that big of a concern about how the money was spent, but that he thought it was unnecessary and redundant to have any more monitors. Well, that says it all for me right there, because redundancy is the hallmark of safety. And when I saw the state itself take out the monitor that was close... And when I saw the state itself take out the monitor that was closest to the plant, right on my road, I went and talked to that state person. I don't know if it was the Department of Health or who, but I talked to him. I live right down there in the lowest spot, the topographical dip closest to the plant. It would be the perfect place for a monitor. I told him that I would beat anyone's price, even if it was for free. Did I ever get a call back? No. The monitor in Leilani, you look on that map of the mile radius, and you'll see, and under the person whose property it's on, it's far outside of the mile mark. I say that there should be independent monitoring up at that site. We should not depend on them. There should be a person who constantly maintains checks and records that data that has no affiliation with them at all. We should all have the same safety equipment they're equipped with. So I hear the plant managers worried about the pantene or petroleum stuff blowing up. I suppose they would, because that could take them out without them getting to evacuate. But what I'm worried about are those gases. If there is a natural disaster like a big quake, those long, thin steel pipes would be the equivalent of a brittle hollow pier. And all those fancy blowout preventers on the top of that pipe, just consider if they're sheered off right below it, or some twenty, thirty, fifty cent below ground. There's no way to cap it. You could have a catastrophe the dimensions of something that I don't think anyone's contemplated. It would be world news. You could create a dead zone on this island, and with the shifting of the wind, who knows? You might have to evacuate the whole island. But now, as far as the, the small releases on an ongoing basis, they're confident in saying, yeah, we support health studies. And everyone makes claims that, oh, yeah, well, there's no scientific proof. Everyone knows it'll be years before that could be borne out with empirical data.
All right, move on to your next comment.
Okay. I do want to thank personally Ms. Trask for shedding some light and bringing up some more information, and trust me, if she found that much information in the shadows that are there now, you can imagine there's a hot, lot more going on. And the way I know that there's long-term plans coming from the top is this, that the legislation they just passed, where the governor says, well, this doesn't really necessarily mean we're gonna lay a cable, we just want to clear the way and make it easy for if we decide to. Seems there's a lot of people in the state that know these long-term plans, and they have a right to do a lot of things to help business. They can give tax breaks and a hundred other types of incentives. But the one thing they don't have the right to do is to risk lives. Now, if this has got Senator Noe's support and Governor Abercrombie's support, they think it's a great idea, they've never put theirself in my shoes. And to me, it's hopeless. I run a tour company. I talk Senator Noe as the hero he is, he risked his life. I've told his story a hundred times. But if he thinks he has the right to risk my life, he's wrong. And to me, that would tarnish his image in my mind. And I, I notice that Big Island is good at giving memorials to people, whether it's the tsunami victims, the victims in the Pohone, the workers at the harbor. Well, I'm saying if there's a catastrophe here, that we want a bronze plaque. And I think every government official that was asked to help and turned their back should be listed and named on that plaque, and I don't want anyone saying, there's nothing we could have done, and you don't know. There's nothing that could have been done. There is something you could do. We should all have the same equipment those guys at the plant have. We should have an electronic canary, and you can get them on a deal where they're rotated and calibrated and fresh every so often. We should all have those oxygen masks to get out. I want my tourists to survive. I want my wife to survive. I want to make it out. There's no time for civil defense or the fire department to send our guys in hazmat suits to direct us. We need a radio call, an alarm that sounds the starting gun. If you don't leave right away, the, the outcome would be catastrophic. So I hope that everyone listening will take this seriously. The twenty years of neglect is no excuse to neglect it any longer. I want to see some of that money spent right away on safety. And the only thing I would add to Ms. Trask's presentation was to include that basic safety in there. We deserve that from our government at minimum.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
Thank you very much.
Okay. One thirty. One thirty.
See you after lunch.